All set? All right, well, I'd like to provide a warm welcome to anyone who is watching and all those who are joining us here in the chambers and actually the rest of my commission colleagues here, and welcome you to our five o'clock Committee of the Hall meeting for Tuesday, September 6th. It's not the day of the week we normally meet because Labor Day was yesterday. We're meeting on Tuesday. So our first order of business is to call the role Clerk Burling. Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Cooney, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney, Mayor Anderson. Here, thank you Clerk Burling, may have a motion to excuse Commissioner Juarez and Vice Mayor Cooney.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, seconded by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed name. Any communications city manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, city manager. Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, I know you're ready, but now is the opportunity for public comments. Here at the Committee of the Hall, you'll have two minutes to provide public comments. If there's anyone in the chambers that would like to provide a comment for tonight's Committee of the Hall meeting, please come to the dais. You'll have two minutes. Please give us your name, where you live in the city.
I've already signed in, so I wanted to take this opportunity to give you some advice about picking the next city attorney. It's, one of the city attorney's main jobs is to, is to help the city avoid lawsuits and also to prevent the city from being embarrassed in court. But also, the city attorney can, in his role as city attorney, take a very conservative position on a lot of the things that makes his job easier. I think there's been times in my tenure on the city commission where I had wished that we could have gotten advice that was a little bit more close to the edge of what's possible and being willing to actually say this is what the risks and the rewards are of pushing the envelope a little bit, because you can hide behind the law and there will be never any progress on civil rights in this country. The law is not fixed to help deal with structural racism in this country. In fact, it's set up, as it turns out, through the last Supreme Court ruling a few years ago regarding the Voting Rights Act, that we're actually taking steps backward. So I hope that you all will find an attorney who has some willingness to make a reputation in this area rather than necessarily to protect the city from all possible bad event. I mean, that's a safe thing for a city attorney to do, you know, and how do you blame him for...
Thank you, Commissioner Urban, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the chambers that'd like to make a comment this evening? Please come forward. Give us your name and whether you live in the city. You'll have two minutes here at the Committee of the Hall.
Right, perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, all right. Good evening. I'm Chardelle Chambers. I live in the city of Kalamazoo, been a resident for many years, and I'm here tonight to talk about transparency. First of all, I want to thank you guys for the work that you do, but when it comes to transparency, especially being a city resident, one thing that really bothers many of us is what's happening with our current chief right now. The transparency as to what's happening is very odd. Nobody's very, very forthcoming, and then we're spending a lot of money on private investigation that we've never done with anyone else. We've had a lot of discrimination cases even before you guys were on the board that we've never handled properly. We've even lost public service officers because they weren't taken seriously. And so when you see our police chief being dragged through the news and totally disregarded, and even the residents being explained to exactly what's going on and why we're doing this new process, it's just such disheartening and very disrespectful. I hope that you guys come back to it and present things better, and also when you go to look for an attorney, that we also get an attorney as well that's very focused on civil rights, that knows how to prepare the community, because right now with the city of Kalamazoo, that is where we still have a flaw. And even in 2020, we had a flaw, and we still have a flaw. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to make a comment this evening? I want to thank those in the chamber who took the time and made the effort to come down here and speak with us, and now I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Chamberlain to see whether anyone has called in to make comments for our Committee of the Hall.
Go ahead and check. We do not have any other comments.
Thank you, D.C. M. Chamberlain, appreciate it. We're now down to the work of our Committee of the Hall session for this evening, and I guess at this point, this is our work here, managerism, so I will ask, how is this going to be brought forward? Is this Shelley Duzick? Are you going to introduce this?
City Commission, City Manager, I'd like to introduce to you Jeff Mueller from Michigan Municipal League. He will be leading the search for our next city attorney. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Great to be here. Appreciate your time.
Welcome, Jeff. Nice to have you here. Let's make sure that microphone is working. Sounds good.
Sounds good. So yeah, I really appreciate you taking the time.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you off the bat here, but because people may watch this online, we're going to have to make sure we do have good audio there. So it looks like you have to be pretty close to that microphone for it to...
Sounds good, yeah.
There you go, okay.
Appreciate you taking the time to meet, and I'm really glad we're meeting kind of as the full commission, although we have a couple of members absent. I find it's very important that we kind of have everyone on the same plane in terms of what they're looking for in their next city attorney or manager, whatever kind of search we've been working on. The process, how it's going to go, is tonight, I have some questions for you, kind of get a feel for what you think about the community, what's good, some of the challenges and opportunities you might have, and then some kind of down-to-breast tax, what you'd really like to see in your next city attorney. After we meet, I'll go back, do some notes, I'll shoot them to your HR director for her to disseminate to either the subcommittee or whoever you decide, just to make sure that I haven't missed anything tonight and that I'm getting, picking up exactly what you would like to say. Once that's all good, we actually will start working on our advertisement. That takes a couple of weeks. The advertisement will go out, and it's out for about four weeks, and then all the applications will come back in to me. Based on tonight's meeting, we develop a matrix, the kind of the key things you'd like to see in your next city attorney, you know, if they have diversity experience, if they're litigating, you know, how many years of experience and whatnot. I will come back to you then with a matrix that has no names on it to ensure there's no discrimination, and it'll have numbers listed, how many people have applied, and we'll go over that matrix, and it hopefully will become pretty clear to you that hopefully the cream of the crop will jump around that matrix. And based on that, I'll have a screening report for you that we can go into. Generally, at that point, most, 99% of the people that apply will request confidentiality until they accept an offer to interview, you know, they don't want their employers to know that they're seeking other employment, so. But we'll meet on that, and hopefully you'll find some great folks that you would love to go through the meet and greet and go through the interview process, and at that point, hopefully, we'll set meet and greet and interview dates and kind of go from there. So I'm very hopeful. Kalamazoo's a great community. I'm a byproduct of Western myself, so, but actually wanted to stay here when, but the jobs weren't just here when I graduated, but it's a great community, it's diverse, there's just a lot going on, and I think we can help you find the next city attorney that'll meet kind of what you're looking for. So I'm hopeful that this can kind of be more of a dialogue, you know, I want to get, you know, please chime in, any feeling you might have about things. So I've got some questions. So Commissioner, do you feel overall that Kalamazoo is a safe community?
So I'm just thinking about this, how we want to do this. So we have about, how many questions do you have, just for...
Well, there's some general ones here, and then we'll get down to kind of more of the...
Get down to more detail, okay.
You know, it's kind of a two-way street. As we go out and advertise, we want to show some of the, just the great things here about the community besides the university. I mean, there's so much going on, the growth and everything.
Right.
Kind of get people's feelings on, you know, it's a larger city, obviously it has issues like all cities have, but overall, it seems, you know, it is relatively safe.
Okay.
The school system's great. I mean, I shouldn't answer the questions for you, but I mean, the Kalamazoo Promise, is that still in effect?
Sure, yes. Perpetuity is the idea for that. So I'm just wondering, say, if you have 10 questions or five questions in terms of general questions, how would we like to, you know, I mean, do you just want to like volunteer if you want to respond or otherwise not? Do we want to, does that sound like an okay way to do it? Fairly informal? Does everybody want to get a chance on every single question? Mike.
I think if you have a question, just kind of raise a hand, so you know that we would like to speak, and question, move forward. How's everybody feel?
Okay, all right. Keep it informal. So your first question was, do we feel this is a safe community? So anybody want to start on that?
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Decker, yes?
I feel that we could be safer. I've definitely, I don't know if anyone's kind of been paying attention to, I've noticed definitely an uptick in crime in the police sirens in the last four weeks, so I definitely believe that we could be safer. I definitely believe that when we hit certain milestones of becoming a safe community, that we will grow exponentially, and I think we're still working on that, and we definitely need a city attorney that is going to fight for the rights for everyone. I'm not saying that our city attorney does not, but just that's something that we're looking for, fight for everyone, equal rights.
Any other thoughts on that general question?
This is Commissioner Hoffman. I think overall, Kalamazoo is a very safe city. However, we have pockets that need more attention, and I think that comes into play when we as a city and as an institution will begin to really, really talk about and begin to do the work around anti-racism.
Yeah, Commissioner Hess.
I'm going to agree there. It's very safe for me, you know. I think there are pockets, and I really think probably an age where you are safer. So yeah, I would agree that it is a safe city in general. I mean, compared to other municipalities of our size and makeup.
I think, you know, I can make my own just kind of anecdotal observation, but for me, what would be important is just documenting what the actual data says, you know. You can, you know, pretty clearly see the number of shootings, number of shooting fatalities or violent crimes that have happened, not only in the city but at the county, and you can see where there's concentrations of crime, which are oftentimes, you know, surrounding concentrated poverty. And, you know, you can go to a number of reasons for that, the core reasons of that of, you know, and so, yeah, I would say, you know, I would encourage just inclusion of just showing what the actual data tells us and where it exists and what crimes seem to be more pervasive. I know, like, certain things like car theft has been high in the last couple of years during the pandemic. Juvenile crimes are definitely up during the pandemic, you know, violent crimes are up, but, you know, again, that all shown in, you know, the actual run numbers of...
So I guess just rounding that out, for me, that is a bit of such a general question that it's a little hard to answer, quite frankly. So since it's so general, I guess my answer would be yes and no. And we are certainly not immune in Kalamazoo from, I would say, a more general sense of challenges that come with urban life, and whether the range of that, you know, you know, might include things you've been experiencing, whether it's lack of safety for driving and traffic issues. I think there are some neighborhoods in Kalamazoo that literally do not feel safe, and some neighborhoods who don't give it a second thought. So that means it's really kind of a best of times, worst of times kind of situation, and, but if you do look at the stats, you know, there's certainly, Kalamazoo is not immune from any of the issues that we're experiencing across the country. It would be, I mean, I think all of us are committed here to this idea that everybody deserves to live in a safe neighborhood, so I think that's what we aspire to, and we're not there. Yeah, Chris?
I was also going to mention, too, we surveyed residents in two forms. One was just, we do it every two-year survey, and the other one was an ARPA-related survey, and safety was one of those top priorities. So it's something that, you know, definitely matters to our residents, and it's, you know, definitely rose to the top, I guess, of the list of things people care about.
Right. I would say, though, if it makes you feel, I mean, I think, I don't think there's any city out there right now that isn't subject to all the craziness going on.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you. I just wanted to put out there, too, the city of Kalamazoo committed a million dollars to gun violence, along with the county, to address that, and also we put a ton of money, I think a little under a million dollars, into youth development for the summer this year. So as we talk about, you know, safety and non-safety, we are committed to it, like the mayor said, and we have done that by putting a dollar on it.
Right, good point.
Just a quick question on feelings on the schools here. How do you feel your school, the public schools are?
Well, Commissioner Decker, you have having firsthand experience of that, right?
I believe for the schools within the city of Kalamazoo, they're always evolving. They're always evolving with the students that come, the teachers, the lack thereof, the pay, the lack thereof, the bus drivers, the lack thereof, the parapropos, the lack thereof, and I feel that really looking into that and really putting pride, more pride and more hope into our education system is really what's, I feel sometimes is going to help our youth too, because they know that they have someone that is vested in them, and they're not just there to get them to pass a test. Really having, you know, individuals and teachers there, and there are many, many great teachers out there that carry with everything that they do, they may not feel supported all the time. I think with the Kalamazoo Public School, something that is great for our youth is the Kalamazoo Promise, definitely stepping up to be able to send these students, children, that may not be able to go to college otherwise, offering up not just so it's just not the four-year university, but also into trade schools. As we hear there's a shortage of trades, and that is something that really needs to be, you know, addressed, I think, within the school system, because not everyone needs to go to school for a four-year degree, because there are tons of opportunities out there that do not require that. So I think, you know, I'm a graduate of KPS, my kids are graduates of KPS, my husband is a graduate of KPS, my mother has taught in the KPS system for 30-plus years. My brother teaches in the KPS system, so, you know, I definitely feel with the educators that are here, I know they're doing the best that they can. I think our schools are great, but I do think that they could use just more advocacy in certain areas.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hess?
We have a, we use air quotes for new superintendent because she came in at a time prior, just prior to pandemic, and had to navigate through that in addition to so many other challenges. I think she's dynamic. I think she cares deeply about these children and these youth coming out of Kalamazoo Public Schools, and I do think she is trying to think outside the box to solve some of the issues that have come forward in Kalamazoo Public Schools, and I'd have to echo Commissioner Decker with, you know, I don't think there's another school district around that has such a gift as the promise, and so I would love for all of our students to either want that or move on to further education elsewhere.
I mean, something Commissioner Hess says all the time, I mean, you hear people say, this is the education city. You know, I mean, we have a long, rich history of prioritizing our public education system, including one of the first public, public high schools, right, yeah, in the country. And, you know, we're the home of the Kalamazoo Promise. We're home to three incredibly impactful higher education institutions, Western Michigan University, K College, Kalamazoo Valley Community College. And so I think, I even met somebody in the park during the Latinx Fest a couple of weekends ago, and there was this couple that had retired from New Orleans and said that they were looking for a Midwest town that, you know, kind of had an education feel and prioritized higher education and everything, and they were between us and, I think, some town in Indiana that was comparable, and they chose the city of Kalamazoo. But with that, I think with anything, when you have high expectations, you have, you know, continue to raise that bar of expectations that you want to be truly the best. And I think there, you know, there's always room to grow and strive for. My children are all going to be enrolled in Kalamazoo Public Schools. I'm a product of Kalamazoo Public Schools, and, you know, I often struggle when people, you know, don't want to commit to our school system, so, but yeah.
So for Jeff, for me, that's an interesting question. I think, of course, you know, public school system is not within our purview.
Right.
And so we are, we're parallel entities, you know, that work together here, and so with that question, I don't have any daily firsthand experience with what it feels like, so I feel a little bit distanced from that. I do know, over time, I've had a lot of experience with our school system. All four of my daughters graduated from Kalamazoo Public Schools. I went to Kalamazoo Public Schools. Like many of us here, I actually have long community roots, and I felt like every one of them had good experiences during, you know, during their time in the school system. I also feel that, because I do hear from time to time about people, about concerns about safety and things like that in schools, I do feel like this is a community that is very devoted to supporting public school system. And whether you look at Kalamazoo Communities and Schools, which is a very, very active organization and well-supported organization here, when you look at the fact that over the course of time, I do not think that there has ever been a bond request that was turned down by Kalamazoo Public School System voters. I don't think that's ever been the case. And as a matter of fact, in the last several years, there's been multiple bond requests approved, and we are, seems like each year, replacing, tearing down older schools and building brand-new schools. We've got another one going right now, and that's happened multiple times. So I feel like there is great community, continued community support for the school system. Commissioner Hess?
One more thing. Clerk Burling, do you mind opening up that flag over there, the light blue one right next to you? And on it, it says, "City of Kalamazoo, Education, Progress, and Industry." Albeit a very old logo and old flag, I really think those three words describe who we are and what we do here. We do progress, we do have great industry, and we are an education city. So let's lift true to our flag while we still have that.
All right.
What changes is the community currently experiencing? Little broader question.
Do you want to start on that? Yeah, okay.
I'll go first.
All right, Commissioner Hess.
I'll go first. I would say an awareness, an awareness of who we are and what we're doing here, an awareness of our youth and how important it is that we support them, an awareness of the levels of violence that we're seeing. You can't turn on a radio or read an article and not know about the violence that's happening here. So I think it's a growing awareness of who we are. And then the discussion about who we want to be, because in 2020, the city appointed our first Director of Diversity at Equity and Inclusion. And so that work is getting going, and it's difficult work, but I think it's part of that awareness that we're all interconnected, that we're all a community, and we all have a specific role to play in the greater good of this community.
Other thoughts on that?
This is Commissioner Decker. I think that I would say that I agree with everything that Commissioner Hess has said, but also, our population is changing, our residents are changing, and we have to pay attention to how that's happening within the city, and really respect these individuals and these families that are wanting to come here, and the ones that choose to stay here.
Yeah, Chris?
Some initial thoughts. So I hear it a number of times, especially from Mayor and Vice Mayor Cooney about, and former Commissioner Cunningham about their experience being on this commission, and this is more about the commission, but I think it largely speaks to the difference we're seeing in the community. You know, 10 years ago, the discussion was cut, 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 you know, you couldn't, you were cutting down to the bone, where being creative was trying to figure out how to do more with the smallest amount possible. And so largely that forces, you know, people to start thinking creatively in a kind of a backwards motion. And I think what we've seen is kind of a shift to a forward motion, where you see unprecedented dreaming of what could become, and then being a community that's an urban core community that has the resources to dream and to do those things. I mean, we saw in the presentation last meeting, where in, I think it was 2013 or 2013, we spent $3 million for the entire capital improvements budget for the entire city of Kalamazoo. Fast forward here, in a five-year period ending in 2026, we're going to spend $300 million on infrastructure improvements. So, you know, to...
So, you know, depending on how you want to look at that as a new city attorney, that, you know, you're never going to have an issue with employment, you know, with that level of precipitous growth because you're going to be involved in every one of those contracts, every, you know, formulation of what that looks like. And so, you know, it is a time where I think people can dream, and now people can, you know, it's going to shift from frustration about what we can't do to frustration about what we're prioritizing about what we can do. And, you know, you see that even just, it made me think of another thing that's happening that's a big deal is that you hear about the shortage of people in the trades. Well, there's a new KRESA Career Center coming up. It's a $100 million facility that they just got a $100 million gift to build and, you know, is for the first time going to be able to really, you know, really hunker down and really prioritize in creating career readiness for people in high-demand fields and make sure that we have those people for the future. And, you know, I think a lot of that started with the Kalamazoo Promise in 2006. But also you look at the Foundation for Excellence and what that's funding, we recently got a $400 million gift for that. You know, we have incredibly generous philanthropy. Western Michigan University has received the largest gift in university history, but the question now is like, what are we going to do with that? Where are we going to show where our value is aligned with those dollars to create the community in the future we want to create for everyone? So I think that's the, I don't know if that encapsulates to me where I see the biggest shift and maybe changes.
Is that Trade Center going to be located within?
It's in the city, but out on the edge, south edge, yeah.
Wow. But it's a pretty big deal. And, you know, even had two weeks or three weeks ago, Assistant City Manager Kick and our City Planner Anderson brought Notre Dame here to do a vision study for what, you know, could we envision for our downtown. I mean, it was exciting to be a part of that, you know, it's neat.
So just for my thoughts, and this will be summing up some of these things, but I think the overarching idea that comes to me as far as what is in the process of changing is our intent about being a community in the broadest sense, being an inclusive community as an umbrella. And what kinds of things are allowing us to have success there is that you cannot dismiss the idea that philanthropy is a big, big part of the city of Kalamazoo. And Commissioner Prudell, you know, listed that, but we have a medical school downtown because of that. We have a, we will soon have a career and technical education center because of that. And most importantly for the city, we have now the most unique municipal funding model in the state of Michigan, I would suggest probably way beyond that, in that we had an opportunity some few years ago when we were experiencing our continual city budget crisis to make some choices about, with our very, very limited options to increase revenue for the city, and one of those was a city income tax. And we didn't end up going in that direction, and that, you know, has its pluses and minuses, obviously. But what ended up being created also through philanthropy is this Foundation for Excellence, which is a very unique municipal general fund funding model. And the intent of that is to be available in perpetuity, to have a beginning nest egg that's approximately $500 million, you know, that will, I mean, that is pretty phenomenal when you think about it. And then on somewhat of a more granular level, we've had much more robust community engagement than we ever have had before. For example, the process was called Imagine Kalamazoo or IK 2025, engage more people than ever had been engaged. It's difficult sometimes to get people to participate in kind of community visioning processes. And we're setting the stage for doing our next one now, which will be IK 2035, is that right? Yes. And at the same time, things that have come out of our 2025 visioning, like more place-making, more walkability, converting one-way highway speed streets in town to more neighborhood-style, slower, you know, two-way streets, and trying to not only make our downtown feel more vibrant, but to help that be connected to our neighborhoods and have our neighborhoods feel the same way. So, but I think it's all under that big umbrella, which is that intentional about community building that's inclusive.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman, a couple of things when I am listening to everybody talk about our city. For me, you can tell the health of a city not by all of the infrastructure work or the new buildings and apartments and condos coming up, but let's look at the health of our most vulnerable to see how are they living and or thriving, or are they yet still surviving? And so I think, you know, what we saw in 2020 with the pandemic, we were able as an institution, and I think this happened throughout the entire county, we were able to remove barriers because people were in need. And now that we have the sense that the pandemic is over, by the way, it is not, COVID is still real, we are going back to some of those old ways of being that are baked in equities and racial disparity. And so while we have something really, really great happening, we also still have this underlying current of not paying attention and really breaking those barriers down and dismantling that. And so we have an opportunity with the right city attorney to help us push that forward.
Was there, if you could, talk a little bit about what you feel some of the opportunities? The next thing will be challenges, but...
When the person gets to come in, when they have a bomb city commission right now, that we can do some great stuff together, that you'll have that support. Two, this is a wonderful place to live. We are right between Chicago and Detroit. You can get anywhere you want to go, and our arts community is fabulous. Those are just some of the things that I'm coming off the top of my dome with. Food Truck Friday is wonderful. Like, there are so many things. Kalamazoo for me is really, really a family-oriented city, and we know how to come together, we know how to come together and have a good time. So those are some of the things that I'm thinking of right now.
Kalamazoo was named the most affordable city? Help me out, people. The most affordable city in which to retire, but also the most affordable city in the Midwest?
I can't remember.
Were very affordable.
It's not a secret, I tell people this all the time, but like, the thing that gets me fired up to do this work is I really believe like in the next, I'd put it in like the five to 10-year category, that I think we will be like the coolest, I mean, I already think we're pretty special, but I think in terms of how the rest of the state and the rest of the world and the region looks at us, that we will be really one of the coolest and most innovative cities in the country. You know, I think, I think we'll put places like Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor to shame. I think they're going to look at us and say like, you know, let's do what Kalamazoo's doing. And it takes a second to get there, but to go from that slash-and-burn mentality and that transformation that started to happen in 2017, it takes a hot second to turn that tide and change that culture from a culture of we can't to what we can. But I think it's exciting. I mean, even just downtown, the transformation that you'll see because of the traffic and the streetscapes and everything that are coming, it'll be pretty exciting. Even just when you probably drove in here, you probably saw the bike wave lanes and the pop-up bike trafficking on West Nudgeon Park. I mean, I just love the fact that we're experimenting, we're taking risks, and there's not a lot of communities of our size that can say the same thing.
Commissioner Decker, I just have to echo what my fellow commissioners have also said here. Kalamazoo's got some great stuff that's in the works. I mean, they're thinking about, with all the development that is going on, again, the changing of the two-way streets to make our neighborhoods more accessible, more walkable, more neighborhood-friendly, with the, you know, possibility of the proposed event center that's going to be bringing more people into the city of Kalamazoo, there's going to be a lot more things here to do within the community. And, and again, I just echo everything that they said, and we're growing, we're growing big, and there's good things happening. We just have to make sure, I feel, that as we grow, we don't grow too quickly and not think about the individuals that aren't able to grow with us within the city.
One more thing I wanted to add, because this is a cool city. We passed a city ordinance that gave more protections to those individuals within our community that were being discriminated against when it comes to housing, and so we were able to do that. And then at the county level, we were able to pass the Homes for All, Homes for All Village program, which is giving us about $8 million that will go through Raza County to address affordable housing and homeownership opportunities. So, yeah, this is a really cool city.
Just one other thing. I was at an event last week with State Representative Rogers brought in Attorney General Dana Nessel for, at KPEP, Kalamazoo Probation Enhancement Program. They're opening up a new café on Portage Road. So in Attorney General Nessel's comments, she said, "Kalamazoo, I go to these other communities and I tell them to come and see Kalamazoo." She said, "And you don't think so much of yourself that you think you're doing it right," but like, she said, "You're doing it right. You have a lot of things going on, and KPEP is just one of those." So...
Jeff, you kind of opened up the floodgates on that one, I guess, didn't you? Just as far as the opportunities go, I think that Kalamazoo has an opportunity to be a model for solving problems. And because we haven't solved all our problems, and we've got a lot of figuring out in this country to do about how we can work together in a way that's going to benefit everybody, and I think that we are the size and the scale that it's, there, any problem that has been experienced nationally for the most part, we experience those problems here in Kalamazoo. And yet we are a sized city that you can, you can get your arms around in a certain way, and it feels like we have an opportunity to do some practicing and working some of those things out at the scale. So I just think that we're, we're like a big little city. I think we punch above our weight, but that, to me, that is an opportunity that we have is to demonstrate how positive things can happen. The other addition? All right, how are we doing on time and questions, Jeff?
Good.
Okay.
Challenges. What challenges do you believe that...
Yeah, Chris?
I would, I would say that poverty has been a pervasive issue for decades and has hovered, you know, around 30% of the people in our community, racial disparity and income and homeownership. Yeah, intergenerational wealth, creating that, overcoming that significant number of our community that are still not able to attain as much opportunity as they deserve. I'd say that's a big one.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Prudell says. Accountability, I think, is one of our challenges within the city. We're working on many things. I see the most important thing right now, well, I see some of the important things, again, is the violence that's within our city. Again, the accountability of individuals that are committing the violence. I see there is a lot of the lack of housing, which we have a great team that is working on some awesome ideas for us to eliminate that. Not just housing for workforce, but also for housing for individuals that don't say, make the, as they want to say, $15 minimum an hour, but for individuals that make $9 an hour, $10 an hour. I think that is a big challenge here in the city. Again, we are working through some of those slowly but surely. I think sometimes a challenge can be, as stated by one of our public comments, transparency. And I do know that we are definitely working towards correcting that with the hiring of our communications individual, Mr. Smith. Yeah, that's what I see.
I would just add to that, this is Commissioner Hoffman, I would add that, you know, for some parts of our community, building trust is going to be, is key, and for others, rebuilding that trust that was lost over the last few years, specifically during the pandemic times, and before there too. So building that trust, not only with city, the city government, but also KDPS, and really, really building those relationships and solidifying those in a real way and not by just checking the box and saying, "Oh, we did a bike rally," or "We took somebody to the grocery store." You know, no, like, let's get down to the nitty-gritty and talk about real issues because at the end of the day, we're all human. Some have a position and a uniform and a title, like, we have a title, and then some don't, but we're all still human, and we, there's a level of empathy that we need to build with one another.
A few challenges. Going to go on the trust thing here. And so our KDPS is really working on continuing to grow the community policing model. They embraced that several years ago, and it's, it's beginning to take hold, I know, in their training, and we definitely need to make sure that continues to grow. That said, one of the challenges, one of the large challenges in that is, with that lack of trust, is recruiting officers and people who want to actually serve the community. It does take a heart of service to do this work, and that's definitely a big challenge. It's a national issue, I'm sure, but we definitely want to be able to recruit those who are willing to serve. Let's see, a few other things. The, as Commissioner Prudell talked about, the older housing stock here in Kalamazoo in our core neighborhoods were built over 100 years ago. So we have older homes who are in need of repair, who are in need of attention, who are in need of upkeep, as well as being able to follow up on our commitment to our community sustainability plan that we passed back in June, the environmental plan. I would love for us to be able to reach all of those ideals that we put on paper in our community for the, for the greater good of the environment.
Sorry, Mayor, I have one, just one more real quick. I kind of touched on it just a little bit before, again, with our great team that's working out ways to address our shortage of housing. Big challenge is our houseless.
Is that...
Our houseless. We prefer houseless versus homeless, so houseless.
I think I'd be somewhat repetitive in what I would say here, but I believe that if we can work together, then, you know, we can accomplish almost anything that we need to. And so I would say our biggest challenge will need to. And so I would say our biggest challenge will be continuing to establish and build trust across the community with our institutions, with each other. It's very, very important in trust that you have legitimacy. And I think that is something that we really need to be focused on in, in building relationships.
Skills needed for the next city attorney that you'd like to see. I actually, I went to the... I'm sorry, the community survey. Things like ability to create an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, that jumped right off at the top. Just wondered what other things you'd like to see in your next city attorney?
Should I start? I mean, going back to this list, I guess I'll just start off, you know, to get started here. I mean, obviously, we need someone who has, in my opinion, who's got knowledge of Michigan municipal law. I think it would be a really, it would be a big, big learning curve for someone to come here and have to learn Michigan municipal law. It isn't exactly the same state to state, so there'd be a big learning curve there. So I, I think that's very, very important, is to have that knowledge and experience base.
Wait, if I could ask a quick question. Would you consider someone if they happened to come from out of state?
I would have to have it explained to me.
Okay.
How that person, you know, what the, what it would take to achieve that familiarity.
Right. And I think even the job description lists Michigan municipal law, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I know when I did the Grand Rapids City Attorney for Florida and Texas, and they didn't know Kalamazoo was going to come up, you know, even a better deal, but
Yeah.
they didn't want to wait, so.
I guess I'll keep talking here as people are looking at the list. I mean, I, I would say, obviously, you want to have a city attorney with integrity, who is, you know, above reproach and, and respected and, and committed to the, you know, the impartial, you know, execution of the law and, and willing to, you know, explain to those of us that aren't attorneys, you know, what that is. And, you know, if there's the capacity also, I guess, to, to allow for some options, you know, within the context of what the law allows, so decision-making can occur. But I think, I mean, some things go together that were on this list, integrity, trustworthy, I mean, very, very important things. And a public person, this is a very public role. Other thoughts?
I have a question, Jeff. Can you, for the public record, let us know the role, it's, it's laid out here in this job description, but will you let us know, in a few sentences, the role of a municipal, of a city attorney, rather than a prosecuting or a defense attorney? Can you let us know that, please?
Well, you know, and I think it's a little different with every community, depending on the size of the organization. 14 attorneys up there. And, you know, the real estate and negotiations and, you know, they're all over. You know, Clyde has kind of got everything under the umbrella with, you know, four, whatever there are in the department. You know, each has, kind of has their area that they work within. Depending on the size of the community, sometimes that expands. But, you know, review of contracts, review of Michigan laws, and if federal laws change and whatnot, and how that might impact you. I know my city attorneys that I've worked with, they've brought, you know, here's what the law says, but maybe here's a couple options that we could still fall within that where we need to go, but maybe we can do it a little bit different. You know, it's going to be different with each attorney and, and community, too, and what they're looking for.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think definitely something, as you just pointed out, Jeff, is, excuse me, an attorney that knows the law can say, "This is what's going to happen. This is what we can do legally," but also be able to really come with some options of not just, "This is the way it is. This is why it's like that. You know, you could do this. These are the implications." Or, "If you do this, these are the implications." So really being able to empower their team to be able, when they sit here within, and they're, and they're representing the city within the different boards and commissions that they need to sit on when we're having meetings, that they also feel empowered to be able and say, "Hey, you could do that, or you can do this." So just really someone that's really given their team the leeway to say, "Hey, I gave you the, the authority to, to give them options, to give the city and to give the committees options."
I, I think so many times I've heard where commissions or councils say, "Every time you tell us you can't do it." Maybe once in a while, tell us an option how you can do it. Try and think of other ways, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. I, I am hopeful, and I really believe that we can find an individual who has a lens of anti-racism and diversity, equity, and inclusion, more specifically, equity and inclusion. You know, many people in organizations are very comfortable with diversity right now, but to go deeper and to really do work of equity and inclusion, there's a deeper dive. The other thing is that that individual, in my opinion, should be unbiased. Unbiased in the way that, okay, this is, this is, this is the letter of the law, but what is the life of the law? How do we impact people in a way that is righteous and just?
Yeah, Chris?
I feel like this is one of those roles where you're lucky, looking for that unicorn person. But I believe we can find that unicorn person, especially when we talk about all the great things that are before us. A few things, and I, I had a little bit of a head start up from the jump with Commissioner Decker and with Mayor being on the subcommittee. So we were already kind of a part of this. So I've already had a chance to think about some of this stuff, but I'll share it with, with, with everyone who's tuning in. Definitely, you know, there's just some things to think about as well. Being a municipal attorney, I think it's incredibly important that we have somebody that has the ability, that can speak to a non-legal audience, and I put myself in that, that shoe, to understand legal work and willingness to educate staff and community. I mean, when you, when you look at Dennis Randolph and the way he can get up here and get everybody excited about how roads work and, you know, road engineering, you know, that's the same kind of level of excitement that would be a dream scenario in that role. And I, and I, I think that also helps to, to do those other things, like build trust and, yeah, some of the other things that we've mentioned. I also think it's important, knowing that that individual manages a staff, that they have some level of managerial skills. The familiarity with the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, because that's a big part. I mean, I was just blown away how many FOIA requests cross Clyde's desk, you know, in a given year. It's just unreal. It's unbelievable. Familiarity with the Open Meetings Act and, and serving an elected body as an appointee. Some familiarity with employment and HR law. I mean, we have over 600 employees here with the city. You know, Mayor came out of, from the jump here talking about the knowledge of Michigan municipal law. That's, that's, to me, vitally important. Because I do think that's a whole, very difficult thing to overcome if, if they don't come with some familiarity with that. And I, I think also just temperament-wise, you know, somebody that has a, an even keel temperament. I don't know that I've ever seen Clyde riled up. But, you know, it definitely helps when you don't feel like you have to be on eggshells with somebody when you ask a difficult question, or things get tense. So I think that's important because it, it does get tense sometimes, and there are difficult conversations we have to have. And sometimes he has to, you know, rein us back in. And so having that ability to work with somebody that's, doesn't get, let personalities or ego or anything get in the way. So.
Other thoughts? Anybody? I, I guess I'll just follow up with a couple other things. As you mentioned, this person runs an office with other attorneys. So the, the capacity to, to manage that office is critically important in an efficient way, in a way that, that helps people feel included and positive. And also, running a city like this is a team effort. So an individual needs to be able to, I would say, the collaborative nature piece of that. You know, you're going to have city manager's office to work with, even though these two positions report to us and not to each other. But, so that means you need to find a way to work together, not only with the commission, but with other departments within the city. So that's going to be critically important. Yeah.
I think that collaboration point is really important, too, because beyond just, you know, you, the city attorney's office and the other departments that you're working with closely, but even just like you look at the, the 40-year water contract that we did with other municipalities and working in that negotiations and, you know, other, I mean, it goes well beyond that, just that office and our departments.
I had, if, maybe if you're telling me if I'm off-base, though, I came up with a couple others, and if, and they even sound horrible. Supportive of the city commission's goal. Look through the lens of a culturally diverse city. Consensus builder, ability to collaborate. Visionary, leadership skills, ability to deal with the media. Communication, both written and oral, obviously. High ethical standards, respected by peers. I think you touched on some of these, think out-of-the-box kind of alternatives. Love of the community, accessible and outgoing. Self-motivated, takes initiative. Good communicator, comfortable with all people. Enthusiastic, flexible, high-energy, public servant, passion for the community and to be a mentor for the staff.
Sounds great.
Professional attributes. I think you've actually touched on these. Strong understanding of Michigan law, research and interpretance of laws and court decisions, strong, clear communicator and excellent interpersonal skills, proven ability to effectively and positively communicate with the public on all levels and with, within the organization. Demonstrates a sense of urgency, prioritizes well, shows energy and responds to opportunities, instills urgency in others, and meets deadlines. Skill in negotiating agreements which accommodate conflicting interest and viewpoints. And strong organizational skills and multitasking skills. Any other professional attributes you can kind of think of? Kind of went through them quick, but just some I thought of.
I think if there were any, it would have to be God.
Unicorn. Well, you know, I mean, when we put this together, we kind of shoot for the moon, and you might want six things that are absolutely, and maybe it'll be five, or we might get seven. Who knows? But we can hope. The job description pretty much laid out kind of the qualifications. Said a graduate of law school with a Juris Doctorate. Minimum of 10 years with comprehensive municipal law experience and practice. If we had something, walk, someone walking the door with eight years, it just was phenomenal, was somebody you potentially would still consider. I hate to, you know, it's hard and fast, so. Management experience, good standing with the state bar, and authorized to practice in the Appal federal and District appellate courts. Any other essential qualifications?
I have a question. So if, if this individual is from out of state, how, would they have a good standing with our state bar, or would the good standing come from their...
Yeah, although they probably would not be considered as, Michigan municipal law was kind of like a absolute kind of go-to, it sounds like.
It was, but what if they went to law school in Michigan, you know, and they're practicing elsewhere?
For instance, in Grand Rapids, we had an attorney that was with the Tampa, was their city attorney, assistant city attorney, another one from Texas. They had had some experience up here, but they hadn't been up here in a few years. So, but they were dynamite. I mean, they screened very well. And I know the commission did interview them. Ultimately, it was someone from Michigan that got the job. I just thought if we end up getting someone just phenomenal, you know, we'll have the discussion, I guess, when the day comes, but.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally open to that. I really don't know, from an inside perspective, you know, how important that is, frankly, or, I mean, many, many of those skills you list are not particular to Michigan, obviously.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess you can hire for the person and, and expect that they will be able to quickly, you know, develop an expertise in Michigan law. But I don't, I don't know what, really, from my perspective, how big a lift that is.
Any other that you can think of you'd like to...
Yeah. Jim, please.
Thank you. Just from administration's standpoint, our organization is very complex, and we have different functions, all the way from utilities to public safety to parks and rec. So having an attorney that has the ability to know when to farm something out versus taking it on themselves, knowing, you know, the expertise needed in some of these areas, I think is important.
Or, does the city attorney handle negotiations, like contract...
No.
No, we don't engage in the collective bargaining process, although we do advise HR on contractual language, but we're not actively involved. We do have a contract for labor council.
Okay. Goals and objectives. I mean, it's a little early, maybe, but what things would you like to see accomplished by your next city attorney? No necessarily timeframe given, but what do you think kind of rises to the top that...
Yeah. Christian Prado?
I'd really like to still look at our FOIA process. You know, I, I was very transparent about this with even City Attorney Robinson, just that, you know, in terms of like that volume, you kind of have to be a freak of nature to be able to, to digest and then consume that many, you know, body cam footage. And everything that goes along with that is just incredibly time-consuming. And I think it, it should be a pretty high priority for us to figure out how to make that sustainable, so it's not built for the person, it's built for sustainability for the future, that we can handle that and do it efficiently and, and whatnot. The other thing is, I hope we keep our foot on the gas on the prioritizing the decriminalization of outdated duplicative, you know, ordinances in, in our local laws. I think that's going to be important. And I recognize that sometimes as a back burner type of the activity, but I think that's going to be important as well.
I would have to say the, definitely the empowering of, of the staff, because they're, they're there to support our city attorney. And we want to make sure that they have the support that they need. So being able to empower their staff, kind of like, I believe it was what Commissioner Prado said, being able to have the temperament to, you know, rein us in. We've had some heated discussions, so being able to be like, "Hey, you know, slow your roll and let's, let's take a step back." Being able to know for sure, you know, things that need to be told to the commission sooner rather than later. So knowledge, passing on knowledge that the commission or committees or whatnot should know in a timely fashion. I'm not saying that Clyde, our city attorney Clyde has not done that, just making sure that stays at the forefront. So, so we are prepared as a commission, and that we know what to expect when we walk outside of our door, something happens and we don't know.
So keep commission informed?
Yes.
Other thoughts on goals, objectives? I think one thing that's going to be very important is we have tended to have city attorneys who have a long tenure here. And, you know, that, that is important for bringing stability to the position and to the city and, you know, that is important for bringing stability to the position and to the city as well. But, so now is the time for some big change, and we're losing, what, 32 years, something along those lines, of experience. So I think it's gonna be very, very important that a new city attorney is very intentional about building a new relationship, you know, with the sitting commission and with the administration, you know, as quickly as possible, so it feels like it's, you know, even if things feel different with a new person, that it feels like it's, you know, it's working with community while doing that. So I think there'll have to be some really intentional relationship building right off the bat.
Any final thoughts?
Yeah.
This is a compliment for City Attorney Robinson, you know, that I really hope for a future person as well, is that sometimes he's almost responsive to a fault, you know, in terms of getting back and answering the phone, email or whatnot, and, you know, it's really appreciated in that regard, and I would, you know, appreciate that, because, you know, oftentimes it's because, you know, we need to be ready for a meeting, or, you know, we have a resident who has a concern or an issue that they're having, and helping us try to navigate that so we can be responsive and whatnot has been really appreciated, and I think that's gonna be important, especially as a good director appointee in this role.
Other general thoughts from anybody? Commissioner Decker, yes?
Thank you, Jeff, for working with the city of Kalamazoo to find us our next city attorney. We appreciate you for that.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys.
Roughly, can you walk us through just a timeline here, more or less, from this point?
Well, I'm gonna get my notes back to Deli here pretty quick in the next day or two.
Yeah.
And just to make sure I haven't missed any of your comments, and, you know, and one of the reasons we do this kind of as a group here, so if anyone had any concerns about topics that you'd like to see, we want to make sure everybody's all on the same page and that we can move forward. When we bring those candidates to you, they meet your requirements. It takes a couple weeks, probably two, three weeks, before they do all their, you know, I'll do the narrative, which I'll send to Deli just to take a quick look at. The league then will put together all the advertising, and the advertising goes out, and I wish I had brought my list, I forgot, of all the places, it goes all over the place in terms of Michigan. I'm not sure if we want to advertise elsewhere, I mean, outside the state, but potentially it'll probably go in some of the areas. We want to make sure we're reaching a diverse audience when we're advertising. And, but once the advertisement does go out, it's out for four weeks, and assuming we get a good amount of folks applying, and we have some really good candidates, we'll move forward. I'll do my screening, develop that matrix, and then be coming back to meet with you a few weeks after that, closing date, so. I know Clyde was hoping to hang around a little bit longer, but, anyway, but.
So it's possible we could have a Christmas present for Clyde then, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I think the proposal they gave said 90 to 120. If we kind of stay on course with what we're doing, my searches usually tend to be more around the 90-day mark, so.
Okay. Great, appreciate it. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions for you, Jeff. So as I'm going over again the memo, the information that you've given us, with your expertise in the past, on average, with a city of our size, about how many applications would you expect to receive?
Well, I mostly do city manager search. I did the Grand Rapids City Attorney search, and we had probably 50
Okay.
applications for that. It was pre-COVID. I'm hoping city attorneys are still wanting to work, you know. Nowadays, you wonder, but, yeah, I couldn't really tell you what the number would be. I'm hopeful that we get a decent amount, so. And I think we will. I mean, and that's why we talked about some of the great things of Kalamazoo. I mean, I have friends that's like, "Hey, we gotta move to Kalamazoo, they got that promise." I mean, people know about it all around the state, that there's just some good things going on here, and, you know, we talked about crime and, everybody's dealing with that now, so it's not unique. But the thing is, you've got so many more good things happening that, you know, the community will sell itself, and you've got a commission that's all working. I mean, I've met with some councils or commissions, told them they need to go through rehab first before we'd meet with them. Ugly fighting, and I mean, they never were gonna agree on it. I mean, I've watched some of your meetings before I came out, and I mean, you guys are doing some great work, and I think that'll show in our advertisement, and if they do their homework and really look at the commission, I think you'll get some good people.
Thank you. So within the matrix, well, this, and this is just for the community to know, so within the matrix, well, and we see each person's gonna be given a number, I believe is what it says, and you're gonna be sifting through those applications. So we can expect to see, say if you get 50 applications, you're gonna wean that down to, say, maybe 20, so we're only gonna see the top 20 candidates that you're gonna choose, correct? Or is it, or will we see the numbers on everyone?
You'll see the numbers on everyone, you won't know the names, but whoever meets your criteria, who I think would fit what you're really looking for, you're gonna get a full-blown screening report with their name, and be able to decide at that point. It could be 10, it could be 20, I mean, I'm hopeful. Generally, there's usually 10 or 15 that kind of rise to the top.
Okay.
And, I mean, knock on wood, of all the searches I've done the last seven and a half years, I've pretty much been able to say, "I think this is gonna be the one." And so far, I've been right, so I'm hopeful that we can do that again. But, yeah, it's gonna, you know, if they don't meet the criteria, I mean, you're not gonna want to meet with them and interview them, but I'm hopeful that there will be a decent amount. The other thing too, there'll be a matrix. And it's very detailed. It will have all these kind of things you looked at. First off, the matrix kind of things. Tell me how you were involved in equity and inclusion. Tell me what community you've worked in that was diverse, you know, and you'll have all the bullet points on that, and then the next question. Then we ask them, you know, some more personal things. We'll do like a quick Google search and make sure that, I think, that you don't get surprised. It's like we hand you the screen, "This guy's great," only to find out he was an ax murderer and bad ax, so. But we try and make sure there's no surprises, and, you know, and usually the cream will rise to the top, and at the interview, hopefully, there's somebody that you just will love, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Yes.
I'm just curious, and tell me if I'm out of line here, but I wonder if, while you're sitting here talking to us, if you have people that you want to send the posting to, like, as you've been doing your searches, you're like, "Hey, that might be a good fit." Being the matchmaker that I am, I'm just wondering if you're the same kind of person.
I've taken notes on a few people from a previous city attorney search that were dynamite. They were really good. Mind you, that was six, four, like, seven years ago, maybe, six years ago, so find out if they're still available. I have some contacts in some larger city law departments that I'll be getting kind of the word out to. Yeah, no, we just don't let the advertising happen. We try and be proactive and see. You know, I know there's a couple people I have in mind that I'd love to see apply, but we'll see, so.
Anything? All right. Well, Jeff, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you all.
And just remind me now, if you wake up in the middle of the night and pop up with something you really wanted to say and forgotten to say, what's the best way to get that information to you? Just write to our HR director, all right? Thank you so much.
And maybe copy everybody, just so everyone knows, you know, so everybody's on the same page.
No deliberation.
Yeah.
All right. Appreciate your work. Looking forward to a good result, yes.
And your help. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anything else? All right, all set. Now is the opportunity for commissioners to make comments. Any comments for our committee of the whole session? Seeing Commissioner Hess.
I'm one.
Okay.
We've been talking here as if we don't have, you know, as we have an ideal for a city attorney that we want to have. I want to make sure that I go on record as being very grateful for the work of Attorney Robinson, and for his integrity and what he's been doing up to this point. I think the next, our next city attorney will be a yes-and, kind of taking those next steps, but yes-and. But the experience and the integrity that you have brought to this position is amazing, and I know we're gonna have a time to celebrate you, but I just wanted to make sure that I go on record as being grateful for your service.
Amen. Thank you so much, Commissioner Hess. Seeing no other comments, I just want to remind anyone who may be watching, our business meeting this evening starts at 7:00. There will also be an opportunity for public comment at that meeting, as well as commissioner comments, in addition to our nice full business agenda, so. Looking forward to seeing everybody at that time. Appreciate everyone's effort, and we are adjourned.